On. Can we read Rockwell?
Lee Sin.
Yes.
Gao.
Yes.
Hardingger.
Here.
Dambler. Okay, six skills. Wyland, here.
All right, on the agenda, we have approval for minutes from previous meeting on August fifteenth.
We're supposed to be having a joint meeting, but we did not get quorum for the board.
Yeah, I was just trying to say, where is everybody?
So what do we need to do, Jessica?
I'm it?
We'll just have you to have our finance meeting maybe.
This is president.
Yeah.
One more board member.
Yeah.
We're supposed to use AMP finance committee.
Yeah, let them know. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Bye. Marcus, a minute away.
Okay.
So.
That give us what we need?
Yeah.
Yeah.
More.
Yeah, because you're here.
Right.
Yep, okay.
So we have a motion to approve the minutes, or we're looking for a motion.
I'll just acknowledge that.
I'll make that motion for acknowledgement.
A second.
Dave. Second by Herminger. Motion's been approved. Any more in discussion? The poll is going to pass. Do we have any public comments? Number six on the agenda.
Attaches, the budget status reports along with the narrative for the month of August. Revenues are still on track similar to last year, a little bit higher. We got six point eight million collected. The big ones we have yet to collect is our shared revenue, and that will be collected in November. We did get our settlement from the counties, so we're all full there. And then, is there any questions on the narrative that is in the packet? We are still anticipating surplus for the general fund at this point. We're kind of looking at, we have some stuff for the new building we're looking at. And for example, just approve like the garbage bins for the new building. We're looking at putting it in this year's operating, knowing that a lot of the surplus we have are, it's not going to be used up this year, and we need to keep that same budget. So it's kind of like a one-time expense. We're going to put it in through this year and save it from other areas. Like, we don't want to pay for, as part of the building project, we just want to keep it in operating and knowing that we have a surplus, it's a good opportunity to get some stuff that we need for the new building.
So if I could chime in on that a little bit, I know we've had a discussion internally here about what, where do we separate some of these little elementary things, garbage cans? You know, things that really are part of this building project per se? But, you know, it's probably something else. We don't have the same, you know, the same type of receptacle and say it's going to have, it's going to accept recyclables and trash, you know, and say, you know, kind of side by side kind of thing. And for the new building, it would be good to have things like that. And that's just my example, I'm just going out there. These are things that would be that part of what the architect would have put in the estimate, I would think. But, you know, we don't have to have that discussion this early now, but I guess it's something we want to clarify here, as we know where to put certain things. We have the building itself, and then there's some of these other things that weren't necessarily part of the A's scope, so to speak. Do you have like a? Does that make sense? Yeah, you have like a list of things that you think you're going to need that include the move? Well, yeah, the move is part of the furniture. Yeah. It's all that's, it's all been, it's been addressed with that contract. So we're going to keep an updated on the budget estimate and stuff for the building. These are some, you know, some of these things that are coming up as something. And these are other things that are on discussion later, you know, potential use of ARPA funds versus, you know, as Jessica was pointing out, that's a marketing surplus potentially, like miscellaneous things, so. Am I framing that properly, do you think?
Yes.
What kind of ballpark figure?
All the things, I don't, I'm not going to tell you I have an handle on all of them at this moment. It's probably something we're going to be addressing, let's say, in our next meeting.
Okay.
Or so. Okay, that is more of a thing to think about in principle.
I have one question. Does it consider an annual thing, it's going to come every year, or like just for this?
I think it's just for us getting, as we get settled, realizing there's certain things that, miscellaneous things that may be coming up here?
Different operational costs, correct?
Well, again, she's, we're indicating that there's projected budget surplus, and if we don't, don't spend it, then you get, correct me if I'm wrong, it kind of goes away. Relative to our next budget?
So there's a couple different things that we do with budget surplus. When we have a surplus at the end of the year, a lot of times it just rolls into the fund balance. Other times, we can apply it to the next year's budget. One of the problems with applying it, like I applied nineteen thousand last year. It's like, okay, so now we're already, when we're looking at revenues, we're nineteen thousand dollars lower than last year, unless we apply and we take advantage of this budget surplus. Then you're kind of sickle, and you don't want to get in that habit, believe, a lot, because it's just really hard to catch up. Because all of a sudden, you don't have that budget surplus, you're still nineteen thousand dollars, and you don't have any money to plug for the following year. So it's just not a good habit. The other place where it goes, it goes into the fund balance. Fund balance is a good place for it. Our fund balance is where it needs to be. It's following our policy, it's at the top end. So when we're looking at these one-time expenditures that are coming with this new building, it's really a great idea to use the funds that we have available instead of, because all of a sudden, you put this money in the fund balance, and then you want to use it. And people look at it, oh, why are you using fund balance? Using fund balance isn't necessarily a good thing, or good times to use it when you have large one-time expenditures, but it's not something we really want to rely on also. Because when you go into Moody's borrowing, sometimes they're like, well, why are you using your fund balance? It's, it can be with that negative by your outside agencies when you do that, so. I think what we're looking at right now is a great way to use it, knowing, we know why there's that fund balance, why we have a surplus. A lot of it is winter maintenance, and it's also a legal position that we didn't fill this whole year. That's also good. Can we call the board meeting to order? Is that proper order?
Yeah. I'm sorry I'm late. My, I have no excuse at all, but I'd like to, at this time, call the board, village board to order, trustees.
Song, Kudrow.
Rowling. Ermeling.
Here.
Feeny.
Uh, Feeny said four forty. Which then prompted Nita that, oh my god, we have a joint meeting, so. Uh, here, yes.
Lagani. I have to say Hardingger and Jen.
Yes.
Same, so Jen. Hardingger.
Here.
Wyland.
Here.
Okay.
Oh, there's Nate.
Nate shouldn't be here, right?
Okay, I see him walking out right now.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to grab, oh, never mind, walked past it.
When I walked in, when I walked in.
I was going to say you can let him in.
It's going to sit down all some of my move or?
Yeah, I won't. I just walked in. You gave me notice.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm. All right, thank you.
So just circle back to what you were, you and Keith were saying. Max, me and you guys will have an idea of what we need to finish moving into this building.
I don't think we're going to have a full idea until we move in. Just because there's just so many different things. Like, one of the things we noticed, how many different garbage receptacles we need compared to this place? The, the, the space that's in that new building compared to here, and how we're going to use it, I don't think we quite know yet. Just like, the traffic patterns are going to be completely different from this building, and where we're, where we're going to need certain things.
Are you talking like trash cans, rugs, and things like that, or?
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
But.
Some shelving, so the only other things.
Yeah, shelving is also something. We have, I don't know if you've been in back net room, but we have a shelving unit back there, and we have a shelving, shelving back in the old vault, the clerk's office. And right now, we have, we're going from two to, I think, three or four places to store things. There's a public work storage, finance development, and then there's a clerk's storage. So we have different storages, and we don't have the shelving to put in each of those three different areas to.
We're taking the shelving out of here that we can, knowing we're just going to need more.
Probably, yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand. Some over time, we'll have the minimum amount we need now, but then, I mean, there could be some waiting that's not going to be sufficient. And one of, you know, one of the other things came from appliances, you know. Any appliances we have around here, some, some degree are kind of old. Can't get the range back here. But, you know, we have the refrigerator, we plan to move over, so those are the things we're still. I appreciate it. You guys think though, because you're starting to move stuff out at the end of this week, within the next, by the time we have the next meeting, you guys have got a pretty good idea of what you need to get? Yeah, and our next meeting actually is still going to be here, based on the, how the, okay, the move is going and so forth, so. Okay.
So you brought up rugs, or Jessica did, who's going to be handling rugs and cleaning?
We'll be handling our own stuff, we'd have a cleaner that has given us a.
Oh, not a cleaner, I'm talking actual rugs. Rugs are replaced.
We're not going to be doing rugs again with symptoms.
Just be very, very careful with that contract, because once you add, you can always add rugs, and they're, they're for life, you can't subtract.
Yeah.
So be very, very careful with what you do with rugs, or logos, or anything like that. Some of that stuff is just over the top and it's unneeded, so, but it's, it's forever.
Yeah.
So, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to acknowledge the August budget status report.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
Can I get the board to acknowledge the budget status report also?
We, we need a motion to acknowledge August budget status report, please. So moved, so moved by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Ermeling. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carry.
Um, next.
Yep, number seven on the agenda, Tiff one to, to detail report from August.
Uh, it's the details for the month of August. Are there any questions? There's not too much activity besides the payroll.
Yeah, payroll, and then we've got some items on the board, trustees, as far as just discussions, I think, so, yeah.
Oh, I do have the new for August is the audit. We do allocate the audit contract between all the funds, and five thousand three hundred got allocated to Tiff one. It is based on the amount of assets, expenditures, and revenues in the funds. That's how we allocate the audit expense.
Okay. Nothing needed, and that's all right, no, okay.
So a motion to acknowledge Tiff one and Tiff two detail report.
A motion to acknowledge Tiff one.
Motion.
Tiff two detail report.
Not second.
Uh, second by me, motion's been approved, any more in discussion? No remarks, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passed.
Likewise, for board of trustees.
Motion to acknowledge.
Motion by Ermeling, second, second by Feeny. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry.
Number eight, review and discussion of twenty twenty-three budget.
Okay. Okay, so today we're just going to go over a brief, the start of the budget. This is our first budget meeting, and we're going to go through a brief overview. So our goals, the budget process, because we have some new board members, I want to make sure we're going through the budget process, uh, the fund overview, revenues for general fund, expenditures for general fund, compensation, and then closing. So the Weston, Village of Weston budget includes Safer, Everest Metro Court, Everest Metro Police Department, Village General Funds, and all other funds. Safer, Everest Metro, and Everest Metro Court each have their budgets approved by a committee other than the Village Board. The Village Board reviews and approves the general fund, all other funds that include the water, sewer, and stormwater utility. Uh, budget process typically staff brings a summary of the proposed changes for the general fund and a summary of all other funds. The Village Board and Finance Review, and they have the ability to drill down into the details of areas they have concerns about. In the past, we used to just give you all these details line by line, and you could sift through it all, and it really didn't work well. It was overwhelming for people who don't normally look at numbers. So what we started doing was providing really nice summaries by department. And then, for the all other funds, we had just a, a summary by fund. A lot of those funds aren't very big, and there really not a lot of activity where the board would have major decisions. Like, for the utilities, every time we have a rate increase or a large project, those do come forward to the board for approval. But in the regular day-to-day operations, it's not necessarily an area where the board dives down into. The meetings are usually spread over a couple of months, so I'm hoping to have two next month and a couple in a, yeah, at least two. I was looking, thinking, looking at next week yet, but I know there's a safer meeting, so we'll have to discuss, because we want to try to get three more meetings then before the end of October. And so it's kind of a tight timeline. I did look at the schedule though, and we could have one the first week in November and still get the budget adopted on time. The village has ten different funds that have wages and expenses allocated to them. Each fund has its own source of revenue that's used to pay for those expenses. Fund ten, fund ten is the village's general fund. There's approximately one point five million dollars of wages in that fund. This fund relies heavily on taxes and intergovernmental revenue. Fund eighteen, fund eighteen is the recycling fund. It accounts for refuse recycling, our yard waste, and our landfill. This real, this fund relies on special charges from the tax roll, not tax levy. One of the reasons why I'm looking through these with you is because when we're looking at services, a lot of times people say, well, let's not pick up leaves, that way we can reduce our budget. Well, I'm going to tell you, it's really not going to affect the general fund and our tax levy, because leaf pickup is recorded in fund eighteen. So there are certain services that the village provides that are not funded by the tax levy, and this fund holds a couple of them, such as our refuse recycling, yard waste, landfill, the landfill that we pave, um, the engineering company to keep track of that is all paid through this fund. Okay, fund twenty-one, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, these are our Tiff funds. These funds record the Tiff activity, and approximately a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of wages and benefits are recorded here. They rely on tax increment, not general fund levy. Uh, funds sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-three, approx, these are the water, sewer, stormwater funds. Approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of wages are recorded in these funds. They rely on utility charges to pay the expenses. Fund ten, general fund revenues. So this is, um, right now, what our tax levy is looking at. So the state tells us how much we can levy. And this, for on the right-hand side of the screen, is the, called the levy limit worksheet. And this, this example of what we have to fill out for this year. I have a nice little summary in the, of Excel, basically flowing through. Our net new construction this year was one point six percent. And then, that ended up with a total of a hundred and three thousand five twenty-three for our allowed levy increase. Last year, our total levy increase was two hundred and four thousand dollars. But of that, seventy thousand was for the Safer district. See this red line here? This line, this is where we can put the allowable increase for Safer. Safer is not quite ready yet. We need to make sure that the Safer expenditure increase remains below CPI plus two percent. What, it's a, if we don't, if we're not able to use this line, that makes our budget a lot tighter. So that's one of the reasons why we're waiting for Safer. Safer has their budget pretty much done. Our increase is pretty minimal compared to past years. Unfortunately, it's minimal because they increased their revenues. And when the state looks at, can you use that line or not? They don't care about revenues, all they care about is expenditures. So when Safer is coming forward with a ten percent increase in expenditures, but we only have to pay, say, ten thousand dollars more than last year, the state would not allow us to use that line. So the goal for Nicole and I, Nicole's the finance director at Ramon, so Nicole and I are watching their budget and making sure that the total expense increase is not above and beyond what's allowed, and that will enable us to use this line same as last year.
But Jessica, isn't that line relating, related to the fact that we have a, a joint fire department?
Yes.
We were just, we have our own fire department, so it would only be, it's only given to those that have cooperative.
Yes, that's for joint fire district services, yeah. We're, last year was the first year that we were able to claim it. We worked with the state a lot last year to make sure we got all the boxes checked so that we could claim that. Here's an idea of where the general fund revenues come from. Sixty-three percent comes from taxes. The next largest is intergovernmental revenues, which includes our share revenue, transportation aid, expenditure restraint, a lot of our intergovernmental revenues. The total revenue budget for the general fund in twenty twenty-two was eight point one million dollars. This, I'm showing you twenty twenty-two to just give you a good idea of where we're at. As I said before, we're able to increase, increase this top line a hundred and three thousand dollars only. That's relatively speaking, not a large percentage. So in the past, we've heard a lot of, how is the state restricting your funds? Like, isn't there anything we can do? Like I said, we only have a hundred and three thousand dollars to put towards our expenditure increases. And that's not a lot compared to our budget of eight point one million dollars. This right here, I have a couple quotes of, the league is fighting super hard, working with the state, trying to get the more flexibility for municipalities to be able to, um, balance their budget. Municipalities do not control their key revenue sources. Remember I said before that the main sources are taxes at sixty-three percent, and intergovernmentals at twenty-two? Well, intergovernmental really doesn't change that much. We're looking at an increase in our expenditure restraint this year, about ten thousand dollars, and then a hundred and three for our taxes. Just over, well, if you think about it, eighty-one thousand's one percent. And we get to increase ours a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of the, our major revenue sources. We talk a lot about fines and forfeitures and license permits and charges for surfaces, but you look at those numbers, I was talking to Keith today, I said, well, if we want to increase one percent, eighty-one thousand dollars, you look at your total license and permits, well, you'd have to increase your license and permits twenty-five percent to get eighty-one thousand dollars, which would add an additional one percent increase for our expenditures. It's kind of a, obviously, there's, it's a way to increase our revenues, but when we're talking about large dollar amounts, it's, it's, that's not an answer. The state hopefully will come through and provide an alternative for the Village of Weston someday to increase their, their revenues.
So you showed the articles up here that have been in, there's been a lot of stuff in the League magazine.
Yeah.
Um, specifically in August. Pam came back from the clerks conference and was pointing out that the League had sent out a communication kind of urging local officials to contact their elected representatives, and it's always more impactful coming from elected officials than it is coming from an appointed official. Certainly, we could work on that together. Wisconsin, I know it's been said, is one of the most heavily reliant states for local municipalities to depend on property taxes for their local government operations. So, again, looking for alternate ways to get revenue is something that is a struggle, and, you know, we've, we've proposed, we had a transportation utility once in the past. There are communities now that are, kind of, bringing that back into play, but I know the city of Pewalki has a challenge to that transportation utility creation. City of Tomahawk has got one proposed, I know, this year. So those kind of things are coming into play. Jessica also shared with me another analysis, I guess, of the spreadsheet provided by the leak today, that there are sixteen levy limit references, levy limit referenda on the November ballot for communities in the state for different things. Primarily looking at public safety, but then public safety, of course, has some dependency on other services in the village and so forth, so I, I guess it's just a statement of fact. I guess at this point, it's a challenge for everybody, and we have some ongoing discussion about that as well. But something I think that we pointed out at this point in this presentation, and I think with some other slides that she has here as well.
One of the things I keep saying are net new construction. We were really lucky this year at one point six, last year was point eight six. But the average rate of net new construction across the state has not exceeded one point seven since two thousand eight. And it went as low as point seven in twenty eleven and twenty twelve. I think it just goes to show that the state's rationale of net new construction just isn't going to, it's not sustainable. And one of the, we, Keith and I responded to, we worked with the League on part of a news article, and it's up in the upper right where it says Weston. And they said, how is inflation going to affect you? I think it's going to affect us pretty, quite a bit. I mean, you look at the fuel cost, like, we're looking at an additional fifteen thousand dollars to add to our budget for fuel. We just got notice from WPS, six percent increase in our utilities. We have pretty big utility bills, I don't think everybody knows, but all the streetlights and just the stations, I mean, the water utility, the sewer utility, everybody has utility bills. All our funds have utility bills, and they're a significant expense. Jamie knows, she looks at our, our bills, I mean, WPS has a big bill every month, so that's definitely going to. So that's definitely going to be affecting all funds, not just general fund, but all I brought this screen up because I think most of you were here when Senator Petrowski was here, and he was saying how he wanted to fight for municipalities and increase the shared revenues. Uh, this shows the shared revenues in Maryland County. Uh, the Village of Weston is right here. So, um, we're under a hundred dollars per capita.
That's per capita, right?
Yes, under a hundred dollars per capita. A lot of times people are comparing us to other communities. Here is the Village of Rothschild, right here. They're over, they're around 250. And then the Village of Cronawater is here, about 200. And the city of Schofield and the Village of Weston are, are down here. Definitely struggling. Um, the difference with the Village of Rothschild and the Village of Cronawater, I believe they get more utility aid. I know Rothschild does for sure. I believe Cronawater does too. One of the reasons why they have higher amounts. When the state froze the shared revenue formula, um, that's the one part of the calculation that they never froze. So those with utilities are continuing to see increases and changes in that doubt, that line on their shared revenue. Okay, done with revenues, let's talk about expenditures. Lots of small print, but the gist of it is, at this point, the village is looking at an $83,000 increase, not including Safer or Everest Metro. What's increasing, fuel, $15,000, utility increase, $15,000, and wages, $7,000.
What was the increase on fuel last year, or the year we're in now?
None.
Why?
Because we, um, had more than enough from 20 to 20, from 20 to 21, so we kept budget the same for 22.
Hmm, okay.
We, we didn't lower as much as we could have had fuel prices stayed the same, but we did just kind of keep it steady.
This last year here was the highest for, you know, down and up.
Yeah, but we budgeted a year ago, we didn't know it was going to be that high.
Okay.
So right now, we are going to be over budget on that line.
I mean, I guess, uh, to answer that question, year to date, right now, we're about $24,000 more than we were last year at this time in fuel expenses.
So another major increase we're looking at for next year is the electric and gas for the new municipal center. Besides the 6% proposed increase, um, we're looking at between a 60 and 90,000 dollar increase in our utilities for the new municipal center.
So 60 and 90.
Total, but so that, that's the net, so it's.
The net was, because right now our budgeting is 30. So between a 30 and a 60,000 dollar increase over our, well, 2022 budget for next year.
It's still significant, Jessica.
That's what we're budgeting, but I mean, in reality though, shouldn't we be spending less percentage-wise area square footage because of the, the green building versus this building? I would think, when it's all said and done, if we take, you know, a 10-year average of here, our first one or two years there, I bet you we're spending less per square foot than we are here. Big time.
We could calculate that.
How about we do?
I can press minus per square foot, but I still need to levy more money.
Yeah, you still have to levy, I mean, we're three times as size buildings when you combine together.
Yeah, no.
And some of the buildings we have now aren't heated.
Right.
You know, so we're going to have, I don't know, what are we going to set that garage at, 50, 55? I have no idea.
I think somewhere around 40, 45.
Okay. Yeah, I can't remember how those, how close those were except for the offices, but, uh, I, I think per square foot, we're going to spend less, so.
Um, another big change that we're looking at is, um, a person like Renee, right now, she's, she's 100% clerk, so I moved her 50/50. Um, she's still doing some clerk duties and she's doing some finance duties, so that 50/50 was a good, a good split.
But prior to that, when you had Sarah and Jenna and you, and now you have Song, you again, is it comparable? You know, because for a while, we were drifting with, without a third, or maybe you just weren't expanding it.
So I've, we've always had three people. Leo was in our, um, department budgeted. Um, in last, into the 2022 budget, we took, um, everybody else, so just Jenna and I were in there.
Okay, alright.
So now we're putting back in some wages and benefits back in. So it's a little bit of a change. I got a $55,000 increase for the finance department. The 126,000 dollar decrease in clerk HR does include a removal of one position of approximately $74,000. And then the moving of half of Renee to finance. Um, the assumptions used in this were a 2% increase in health insurance. We got notification today that we're hoping for zero, but we did get a 2% increase in our health insurance. And then it also is assuming a 4% wage increase across the board. And that goes into my compensation. So one of my main goals for the meeting tonight is to get an idea of what the board finance committee wants to do with compensation. Uh, last year, we put something in there, the budget got adopted, and then as things, the economy went on and the amount approved by the board ended up being more than what was budgeted. So this year, I'm hoping to get a better idea of what the board's thinking for compensation, um, to make sure it's incorporated in the budget.
And the 4% includes the CPI, right? Am I saying it right?
Well, so I think perhaps part of the question is really, do we feel this is adequate for what the current con, you know, the current climate is? The general consensus, as you talked to, other municipalities is a, you know, 3% to 4% is kind of their, what they're budgeting for. Now, that doesn't mean everybody gets that, but is that, but in reality, is that adequate? I mean, what, I think one thing we have to be trying to do is retain the staff, maintain our capacity. Everybody's in the same boat throughout the state, you hear from everybody. You know, I was at a utility manager's breakfast on Thursday, you know, there's this, when they're looking for employees, they used to get 20 and 50 applicants, and now they're down to two and three, and the ones they get aren't qualified. We're hearing the same thing from police department, we're hearing the same thing from fire. So I, so I, I guess, just making sure that we are adequately addressing. I think that was part of the reason that our recommended increases last year were higher. They, they were within other budgeted funds we had. We had some, some budget for, um, merit increases, performance increases, if you will, and then had to kind of substitute from other areas. But it's something we have to still, we have to put something in the budget now. And we have some other things potentially occurring in HR, but, um, still trying to get, handle on this budget.
So to answer my question, does it include the cost of living?
I, we're saying that.
We're not going to do this twice again.
I would read it.
No.
I don't want to.
Okay.
You don't want us to. We're not, we're not trying to, so.
Good, okay.
So, let me clarify. I say CPI, that's when I have my budget worksheet, CPI, and then I just plug in a number. Obviously, that's not CPI. CPI for August was 8%, but that's not something that the village is going to be looking at. So, um, when we're talking about wage increases, I do have three, four, and five in there. So, okay.
Well, if I'm, I'm saying the wrong thing then. I'm talking about, last year, we did two months prior to the wage increases, we did a cost of living. And then we came back with a wage increase, right?
Well, with, right, well, we would have considered to be merits.
Yep. Whatever. But I think we need to go through this process once. And I had HR sitting right there, but Dwayne, you go ahead.
You first, you guys, you have first.
Second.
Okay.
No, you go first. The CPI is exactly what she says. I'm doing interim work for the Village of Cronawater, we're trying to advertise positions. Can you get applications? Wage is not high enough. City of Wausau in the middle of last year increased their staff by 4% for cost of living middle of the year immediately. Um, proposed, I proposed a few things to Cronawater, couples' positions got increased. I can tell you right now, if, if, if you're going to, you're going to be competing with the private market, you're going to be losing staff if you don't start paying them what the, what the cost of living is today. Because we've been living with 1% and 2% for so many years, and now we're sitting here with one year of inflation, so it's really cost limits at 8%. You do what you want as a, as a community, but I'm telling you that I'm, I'm living the, the, living the, not the dream right now, of trying to find people, and you can't even find them. And when you do get someone, get them to the door, interview them, you lose them before we can even get them, get them hired. I've been doing that for the last two months.
I don't think we're talking apples to apples. I don't, I don't think Cronawater and Weston are in the same boat. I, I wish nothing but the best for Cronawater. I, I, if I could help, I would try.
Oh, I'm talking about CPI, in other words, cost of living.
I'm just talking about getting someone into that municipality versus here.
But you can be.
We had some nice interviews with a lot of people here when we put something out there. I'm not saying we're the best, I'm just saying that we get a pretty good group.
You do.
The police is, is a darn hard for us. Fire, we're, we're holding. But, uh, we got, we're very fortunate to bring the people on we did in finance and the clerk. Go ahead. I, I just don't want to have a fear mentality here. There is a tremendous amount of fear here, private sector.
Yeah.
You are throwing cash at people that don't even know what they're supposed to be doing.
I, I understand what he's saying. I have, I've had the same issue all summer, and anybody that's working for anybody right now is short-staffed. Um, my, my question is to the staff of Weston, as department heads and the leadership within Weston, rather than ask us for this, I'd have, I'd ask you. Is 3%, 4%, 5%? Is that, is that going to be acceptable, one of those numbers? To the staff here? Are we at risk of losing people on the staff here solely because of a, a 3% or 4% that increase in your pay? I understand that cost of living's gone up, and we want to compensate you for that, we want to retain you. But before we make that decision, I'd like your input. If, if, if you're comfortable with 3, 4, 5, or if there's other determining factors that are going to keep you here in the Village of Weston, working with us, which I, I hope it's more than just money. Because at some point, we're going to run out of it. So I, I.
Dave did about five years ago.
Yeah.
I guess, a question I was going to ask is to the upper management, um, department heads, is, you know, how, how many people have we, key people, key people, have we lost in the last 12 to 18 months? And then they go to another municipality, or do they go to, into the private sector? Or, or what?
Well, I think the, one example would have been, uh, Deputy, Deputy Finance Director, who, I think, was looking for a, you know, different environment to live in, you know, in cities, got a better opportunity there. And you can't always have the opportunity for a younger, you know, and say, a deputy director, or even a, you know, someone saying, look at the field potentially to advance, but I think we still need to keep those positions adequately compensated, or people are going to leave, so.
But, but wait a minute. I'm mixing up that question because you're not answering his question. Jenna was going to leave regardless.
Have we lost?
I know you're not. Because Jessica told me, it's not, it's not if she's going to leave, it's when she's going to leave. She wants to see the world.
Right.
And that, that gave me a lot of comfort when I heard that, versus she left because of us or because of Weston.
Well, okay, so I explained it differently, maybe, but I, I guess I'm not, I'm not, I'm saying.
But money went to help Jenna.
No.
Money went to help Jenna, at all.
No, very.
Money went to help Sherri.
Sherri was planning to retire, that wasn't.
Yep, and a little bit longer, but true, yep.
Not part of the discussion. Just, my gut tells me we need to have some more flexibility than just that, that number up there. So that's, I guess that's what I'm saying, I said right now, so.
But how many people, like, like saying in the public works and in the parks, and how, how many people, we lost, anybody to like the county or another, to Wausau?
Michael could probably help you with that.
I guess last fall, we lost our fleet foreman, who took a job at American Asphalt to run their mechanic shop. And then we also had then hired a repl, or a person for retiring last fall, I think he got hired in November, December, and he had left us in April to go take a position with the Langley County Highway Department. And then we, uh.
Jen.
What?
Jen.
Oh, we lost.
Jen.
Jen was last, uh, that was last summer as well.
Was that, so first, was first?
Within the last 18 months?
Yeah. Yeah, she was then last.
June.
Yeah, June, so.
I would, okay, so I would say that in two of those instances though, was that all about money? For the fleet foreman and what?
Well, that's, that's the other point that I wanted to make.
I would disagree with some of that, okay?
That's the other point I wanted to make, is that in the circles that, in my tight little circles that I'm around in, these people that have companies, manufacturing, ag, uh, medical, whatever, it, it's, it's not always about the money. It's, uh, you know, here's my, here's my family situation, and here's what works best for me and my family. Can you, can, can we get together and work? So it's, I want to come in earlier, I want to leave earlier, I want to come in late, I don't want to work weekends, I only want to work three days a week. I'll work all the weekends, but I gotta, I gotta be off in the middle of the week, whatever. Companies are doing all kinds of stuff to make it work for a good employee to come in, anything.
So we do have some ability to make some adjustments, but by and large, we, there are certain positions here that we don't have that flexibility for.
And I, and I understand.
And that discussion has come from HR. We also had the discussion last year during the compensation, uh, increases, that sooner or later, it is about the money. It's not just about the conditions or the, um, the culture or whatever. So I don't mean to talk, you know, be, I know Dwayne was asking to be there.
Well, do you mind if I offer something?
Mm-hmm.
So I agree that it's not always about the money, but like, take Song and I, for example, we both came from Schofield. And we both liked our jobs there. But we, I think both of us, we wanted the challenge and we want, it was a bigger community, but both of us were excited to have an increase in our pay as well. So it does play a part in your decision-making. And I'm not saying that that's what it's all about, but at Schofield, the raises were typically two, not usually more than that. So eventually, that catches up with you.
Then Mike, one for that, yeah?
I, I have to agree with, um, Mark, that the community I talked about is not similar to this community at all. First of all, this community has a wage scale that's compatible with any other surrounding communities. And that community does not. The other thing though, is that I'm not talking, I'm talking about just what's happened today. I'm not saying we should be scared, but you should realize that 4% is half of the consumer pricing that. I'm not saying that you should be hiring for, they propose for at this point in time. I do understand what administrators go through, what you have to do with staff. I think you're going to be, if you look at, if the economy goes, and continue to go in raising the CPI, you may have to look at another adjustment mid-year, and I think all you're trying to do now is see what that would be. You should just look at those numbers, that's all I'm saying.
Now, we, I mean, we can approve anything we want, and we don't have to pay it. We can do a four, I mean, our discussion was between a three to five, and we thought four was right. I guess I'm not hearing that now, now I'm hearing more. But we can find money. I, I'm, my heartburn is losing Jessica. My heartburn is losing other department heads. That's my heartburn. Uh, I, I, I deal with, uh, with turnover all the time, but I'm in a different world. I mean, you just can't expect people to work second and third shift all the time, it's impossible. You know? You know, how many people are gonna go out in the middle of winter and work on a watering for two or three days, you know? Or plow snow whenever you get called? I don't know. I think we're very fortunate to have the people as long as we have had. That are, are doing those kind of jobs, really. Same, same with the police and fire. Michael, you need to hand up.
I, I guess I was just gonna add the, the most recent uh, exiting public works employee we had. I mean, when he left, I said, you know, what, what is your reason? And basically said he was waiting to get his pay increase this past spring and he was disappointed at. How minimal it was. So he found another opportunity. I said, well, can we make it up to you? He's like, well, no, I feel like my worth wasn't realized, so he was leaving. Wow. And when we were recruiting for his position, we had it open, I think for two months and we had three applicants. And one was, I guess, you know. What, what met required, met, met the minimum requirements essentially. So I made it to, you know, trustee hiring there's point, I mean. We, we have been lucky that we have people that have stayed with us. We've got a lot of good tenure, but. And if we lose that, I, I think it's gonna be a struggle to find new. I mean, you see the county and the city of Wausau, a lot of them are hiring and right now our pay range is kind of where theirs is. I mean, I'm not sure what um, other, you know, cultural or other things are going on there, but uh. And I know, I believe both of those communities are going through um, uh, pay rate uh. That's where it studies.
Studies.
So.
Was it county?
City of Wausau.
Yeah, Wausau and Marathon County are in real trouble right now. For a number of reasons. And speaking freely. The culture that they have there is not the culture that we have here. I don't, I don't feel that at all, okay? When I go down there, it's not what I feel when I'm here. I think we've got, it's. Whatever's going on with department heads and the people that we have and, and Weston is exactly what you said, we're, we're blessed. To have the, the staff that we do, so that's why I would like some feedback from you guys. If four percent is good. And you know, we take a, another look in four months and it is the CPIs through the roof. And we could consider some kind of.
Bonus.
Something at that point, okay? To assist cost of living, whatever else is going on in this crazy world we're living in. I mean, would that be enough for everybody to, you know, feel good from a staff standpoint? Or maybe from our standpoint and the administrator and department heads that we're.
It, it's the ability that, you know, to listen to Jennifer or Michael, Jessica, you know, Pam, whoever. Keith, you know, to fight for someone that, that it is gonna be the difference. I think the building's gonna help. I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, we're gonna use it or abuse it. But I think this is a tired atmosphere here. And we're very fortunate to have. The family feel, probably not me included, because I'm a stinker sometimes, but. That we have an intimate uh, deal here. I, I think it is, like when you say, when I was on the county board, I never felt really part of it or engaged. When I'm here in any capacity, I feel like I'm part of it. You know, it's just a smaller and more intimate.
It is.
And I, I know staff probably doesn't feel it all the way, all the time. Probably especially him with eye roll, but it's, it's the truth. Yeah, it was definitely an eye roll. Yeah, I can actually hear and see your eye rolls on the phone. So just so you know that. But you, you can hear mine anyway.
Uh, director would also.
Yep.
I guess the only thing I was gonna add too is, I mean, a four percent is different to people based on how much money they're making too.
Right.
You know, somebody who's at, you know, nineteen, twenty dollars an hour. It's, it's not a big increase, somebody who's, you know, more on a department director level, I mean. Yeah, okay, you know, so I guess. I don't know if, you know, I guess maybe Keith wants to say something, but there is a difference.
So to that point, I did hear another thought, you know, when this came, actually came from the departing administrator of the Merrill that, you know, that. They were thinking, looking at. Say uh, you know, a higher percentage for the, those lower paid and bigger ones and lesser on the, on the top potentially. I mean, I.
Yeah.
Maybe just, you know, for some intention of those younger, lesser experienced people, you know, things of that nature. Those are things we can talk through, I guess, as time goes by, but. Or as, you know, we get into the year, but I. Obviously the wages is a concern or the compensation is a concern based on the CPI right now, so.
In the past, when we, when I was in experience in where there's a lot of increase in wages. It seems like the, we got to a certain point and some actually was in working for us, I think, Marathon County time. And actually it was a scaled jump, highest percent increase for the lower paid than, than higher paid people.
Yeah.
And, and it was because it, it just, when you start seeing four percents and six percents on a higher paid person. And you start looking at only a four or six percent on a lower paid person. It doesn't, it doesn't, the, the bread and butter on our table is the same as cost for the higher paid person. So at that point in time back then, we worked very hard to get a adjustable scale. And so that, that is very much, but now you get to these times. And the economy change like that and, you know. That is something that you may have to look at to keep, keep the good, um, the folks in field. They're there. And we have, you can have great department heads and you can abortion them, but they're the ones with the frozen toes and frozen feet working on the trenches.
Uh, Director Troutman, what does the typical, or what's the typical entry level wage? Per hour?
Depends what department, what district.
Yeah, what departments? Or like about eighteen to twenty, based on the experience?
Parks.
Same.
Up the same for a person?
Yeah, Dwayne?
That was leading into my exact question was, uh, does the league have some kind of a. Information. Where, you know, they've got plus or minus ten percent as to what like a park director makes? What a public works and utilities person makes, what a snowplow driver makes, given this many years of experience and. And that type of thing with, in the parameters of a, of a municipality that's about this size. You know, I'm not comparing to Madison or Milwaukee, but to. The, the, the information's gotta be out there.
So, uh, do you mind if I answer that? Because last, you know, last year we went through, um, right at the beginning of the year, actually, it was one of our first, first things that we did. They did a comprehensive study on. Um, the positions within Weston here and they compared them to similar sizes and. We kind of did an adjustment. Coming up to what was it, five or six percent on some cases for some of the salary for the employees to kind of get them. As close to being on par with everybody else.
The, the median.
Yeah, exactly. In some cases we're actually a little high, but we got them real close to being, I mean, I think the lowest was ninety-eight percent or something within that. Well, it was really close that I did an adjustment. I think so here's the comparison study.
So. Your question about is, does the league have resources? No, they don't. They have some limited amount of. Information related to positions that have been furnished to them, but it's just by anybody that's willing to give that first. There's very limited information there. Actually, the information that we're talking about when we look at our pay matrix is based on. Twenty nineteen adjustment for twenty twenty. So it's, it's aged. So the discussion was we need to update that by doing the same thing we did la, that time, which was to. Get a better handle on what's going on right now. And it's with the volatility out there though, it's kind of, it's a lot tougher task, so. There's a couple of communities over in Green Bay that just went through this. The pier, I think, and Howard said they just did it, you know, and furnished the information. Over's doing it right now and they, when they get theirs done, they submit it to us as well, because it's public information. So the task is to try to get this accomplished, so we have some better up to date information. To get the kind of thing that you're talking about.
I think if we do like a four percent.
Yeah.
Look at a four percent and then possibly look at an option later in the year, if it continues to escalate. To try to compensate the employees, but not at a long term basis. Is my question, I guess, if we could do something like that.
Like a bonus where it does increase.
Something to assist in everything that's going on, because sooner or later, you know, I mean. The whole thing stabilizes and goes down, but.
Yeah.
I mean, if we, we're not gonna, if we bump these, these pays up seven or eight percent and then. Next year, things kind of stabilize back out and go back down to four or five percent, then I don't. Yeah, I'm just looking for our budget for.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think something else that we didn't ever consider in the past was we always did municipalities, cities, counties, whatever. I mean, it's, it's so readily available, but everything is out there now. A quick trip's fifteen, fifteen hour. You know, same behind the hill. You know, uh, you know cashier, you know, but it's weekends, nights, whatever, it's getting called in, stuff like that. You can make almost seventy thousand dollars a year at Cordova, running a Cordova. You can make that or more at a quick trip running one of those easily. And uh, I mean, our, our drivers are making a hundred thousand dollars a year. And, and ten thousand dollar sign on bonuses, but I mean, those, those wages are everywhere. We can document that and instead of going here and, you know, Fitchburg and all these different places. That's the competition too. You know, except for the directors and, and, you know, some of the more professional. And I, I, I don't want to bring them all apart here, but. You know, if, if this is what your expertise is, then it's a little different, it's a little more defined. But you know, during the interviews. Uh, you know, Jessica's getting proposition for twenty, twenty-five thousand hours more a year. You know, that's all day long, that's all day long to go into private, because there's just nothing there. All day long, I mean, the minute I heard that, I just, you know, I'm just going, oh my God, my God, you know? So.
So I know another thing that's always, that has been mentioned in terms of retention is. You know, doing something that's meaningful and that's something that the current, maybe the current generation of younger workers is looking for as well, so. I mean, certainly we can sell that, I would think, if you're gaining some satisfaction from helping. Doing things that benefit the public, the village overall, that kind of thing, so. I, I think that's probably what draws people to this line of work to begin with.
I'll tell you Keith, I'm not here for the.
What? But one of the biggest things we did, especially for, you know, our receivers, our loaders, I know it's totally different than here, but we went to a four day work week. And it's, it's a hell of a balance, let me tell you, when we're doing seven days a week. But you know, in not all the jobs, but some of the jobs, you know, you couldn't do it with the directors, but. Well, I don't know, maybe you could, but I mean, you just have to have the coverage. You know, and in our side, it's a little bit of the customer service side, but you know, on the snowplowing, that's, that's a whole other animal.
Yeah.
But you get a snow event, you might be working eight days straight.
Yep.
So I have my, um, offer, what's that with public work staff?
Well, we did that for the summer, didn't we?
Yeah, for the summer, we went four tens, so.
How the guys like that?
They've done it in the past for a long.
Yeah.
A lot of years, yeah.
On a case by case basis in the past, this year we kind of just did it. You know, we ended, last week was the last week of four times, this week was.
You know, week to eights.
Were they pretty happy with it? Everybody?
Yeah, I, I think they enjoyed it, I think they started getting tired of it, you know, especially once the kids started going back to school and.
Yeah.
Things like that, but uh.
I know several people that do three twelves.
Yeah.
Okay. Three twelve.
You don't, you don't always feel the extra two hours, but you always feel the third day off.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the hard part is too, we, you know, we, we need sunlight to work, so we try to. You start getting it six AM, you know, at this time of year, it's still not quite light enough to do much, so.
I, I think though, to everyone's point here is, you're in that flexibility, that's a big work. To be flexible, to be able to accommodate, you know, to, you know, different things. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty tough on that kind of stuff, but I'm, I'm learning, I'm trying to get softer on the flexibility stuff.
Do we, uh, I guess to move on this, this, this subject? Can we request? Some feedback by the next meeting if, if three percent or four percent or five percent. Plus, if there would be. Any sort of uh.
Well, I, I think we definitely gotta go in at least at a four. And to Michael's point, we can certainly pay, you know, his position of one and a half to two percent and then give everybody else that six or seven.
That's what I heard.
I thought that was very generous, very generous, you know? And I thought, you know, I, I didn't realize that the same amount of money applies. I'm kidding, of course. But um, you know, we can move that money around, you know, we could, you know, it might be a little tough to do a five percent, but.
Well, one of the things that we do is how I budget normally, how we've been budgeting in the past is we increase everybody's wages. A set percentage. And as you can see, this is how the wages are allocated. We have lots of wages going everywhere. And then what we've also done is in the general fund, general fund only, general fund, like I said before. Tax levy, that's what um, pays for those wages in the general fund is the tax levy. Which is um, set once a year, we need to make sure we're balanced. So what we do is we designate a chunk of money, we call it contingency for wages. And that is where that second push for money come. Usually we get it approved that everybody gets a set amount. We can change it this year, but this is how it's been done in the past. Everyone gets a set amount, I put it in the budget that way. And then we say is, say fifteen, twenty thousand dollars in a merit increase. And that can be used for bonuses or just other things for merit.
One time.
Oh, one.
One time, okay.
Well, that's not true, that merit.
Yeah.
Has been used for market adjustments. In the past, when we were trying to get everyone up to market. Some people are getting larger chunks of increases, so that was just budgeted separately.
This will be done by the end of the year, correct? Yes?
I, yes.
Yes, right? End of the year.
Yeah.
Uh, by December thirty first or January first, increases will be done. Yep, cause that's, that's when it says, or did we change the date? If we change the date, then we've got to have a formula for paying it different. Cause I, I think we should stay away from that holiday time, I think it should be whatever. I mean, it's been primarily probably what?
Talked about in the middle.
March? April is probably a norm.
Or January, but.
But even February first, but, but then you gotta have, then it's a thirteen month deal.
Right.
Uh, they, you know, I, I, for me as an employee, I just want to know. And, and you're right, whoever said it, I am here for the money. I am here, you know, I'm in for my job, I am here flat out for the money. I ain't getting paid, I ain't there, period. So you can sugarcoat it, you know, you're PIA, I'm having all kinds of fun, it's kumbaya, nope, it's money. Now, if I enjoy it, I'll stay a lot longer.
Yeah.
I will, a lot longer. And if there's flexibility, I'm staying even longer. So. Yeah. So whatever that deadline is, we've just gotta stick to it.
Well, we have a lot going on this fall.
Uh, money's number one, money's number one.
The issue.
Yep, there, there cannot be an excuse, what, what, I don't care if we have mountains to climb. The pay has to happen. When that person said they waited a couple of months, you know, for finally to get paid and then they realized it wasn't there. You know, so maybe if we would have paid them on time, it wouldn't have been such an issue. But then having to wait and the anticipation and then the letdown? Too much.
Okay, so can I suggest that? By the next meeting, we have feedback from department heads on what would be acceptable from the employee standpoint? And just as a general idea to send out to everybody an email, just, would you be happy with three, four, five percent?
And what, two, two department heads?
Well, department heads out to their employees, we can get something back and department heads can report Keith and get an idea of what.
Oh my God.
The consensus is, I don't know, or just.
You just said, you just said you'd send an email to what you'd be happy with? Nine, ten, eleven percent?
Yeah.
I just went to union negotiations with.
Yeah.
With professional police officers. Wow, no humor there, no humor at all, so none.
Where do you end up there?
Six. Six. No split, six right off the bat.
Right.
Me too.
Okay. Last slide. In closing, prices have changed significantly over the last couple of years. Borrowing was between one and ten percent, fuel was under three dollars a gallon. And the village decided to invest in the future by building a new municipal center. Since that decision has been made, utilities companies are looking at six percent increase, CPI is around eight. Borrowing is going up, I copied it today. A federal reserve will roughly double its benchmark interest rate between four and four point two five by the end of the year. Want to remind everyone, we have eight million dollars that we need to refund yet. That refunding won't happen till January.
But we got half of it at a really good rate.
We got half of it at a really good rate, but we still have.
It's gonna get all eaten up on the next round. Yeah.
So, um, we're lucky we acted fast on that, but now we gotta get the second half locked in as soon as we can, but no sooner than January.[1718.40] We're in uncertain times, classes are going out, but state limit, the state limitation on revenues has not changed. We pulled most of the cards out of our back pocket over the last ten years. We really have been struggling since basically twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen. We've, we've always been trying to find additional funds. We found a lot, but right now they're definitely dwindling down. And we were talking about it, while gas prices for all grocery costs were up by thirteen-point-five percent in the past year and health insurance costs jumped twenty-four-point-three. As I said before, we were expecting zero for our health insurance, but by two percent is not so bad compared to twenty-four percent, so. That's the end of the presentation. Next presentation for the budget, we plan on bringing those summaries that I talked about before and then having the board. We're going to send you the detail, but we're not going to be, I don't want to put it in the pack. I don't want to get people too concerned about the details, but I want you to be able to drill down and look if you're concerned about a number or give me a call, we can walk through it. But yeah, that's where we're at right now. Does anyone have any other questions or comments on the budget?
Good job.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty.
No, 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 we're not budgeting.
What?
There's nothing to approve.
Yeah. Okay.
We're just.
Discussion.
Last one, that's here.
Okay. Was that eight or nine?
Nine.
Okay.
Actually, that was eight. We're talking about the budget timeline.
Because we didn't do a timeline yet, okay.
But I don't have an attachment there, but I was just, I was just trying to figure out when we want to meet again on the budget. Do we want to have the budget adopted by Thanksgiving or are we? Because Thanksgiving is so early this year, are we fine with the week after? That Monday after, it's the fifth Monday of November, I believe.
You have to put that in there.
When are you going to be, where are you comfortable?
It's just a presentation.
Hi?
Just an announcement.
Let's see. I'm not sure yet. Do I know?
Now, we should.
Everybody just want to aim for that on Monday after Thanksgiving, it would be an extra meeting though.
Yeah, it's the Monday. It's twenty-eighth, yeah.
Okay, can you still set the levy?
Thank you.
Do we have a specific plan?
Well, I think I, I think I threw that date out there because you thought you would have a budget adoption. Budget, strategic analysis, all that shit's coming.
I was looking at budget adoption on the twenty-first.
I knew this earlier.
Okay, November twenty-first?
I think I was not sure.
Everybody hear that?
November twenty-first.
Unfortunately.
That's the.
Then we'll just. Oh, we can always change it if we come up and there's, we're not sure. Okay, so budget timelines.
Okay.
I'm going to return on the agenda, discussion and possible recommendations.
Uh, is this?
What? Aquatic, um, sorry.
Yeah, is this Sean, is this you?
Yep.
So, but all the rest of this stuff is for board, right?
Well, this is just still out there for discussion every time we meet. So, you know, there's still, we're getting some updated numbers on different things. Some of these things are going to fall off of here eventually.
Okay.
But also looking for some direction in principle on a few things. But tonight, there are two specific items that are being asked about, determining.
Aquatic?
Conclusion on the ARPA fund use discussion. So first one being the leak repair at the aquatic side.
So, I mean, I drafted a pretty extensive RFC that pretty much covered all the details that we've gone through since basically the pool closed on August twenty-first. Obviously, we did a bunch of work in the spring, June, isolating the leaks, et cetera. So we were able to operate the entire season without shutting down. So since then, we've had a leak detection company come in. Unfortunately, really limited on what they could do. They were, we knew there was one line that they could possibly trace and test, which was the feed to the floor fountains, floor gut, for those. So we left the pool full for a couple of days after we closed. So we were able to operate the pump, pump bar through it. He traced it, he found a leak in the, basically the second half of the pipe somewhere. But the problem is he could hear the leak all the way throughout that pipe. And then the other area, which is the feeds to three of the features on the play structure, they weren't able to leak detect because as the water's going through the structure, it's all spawning to the ground all around you, it's going to throw off their ultrasonic leak detector device. So they wouldn't be able to hear it through their, through their headphones. So basically that was done and we thought we had a section that where the leak would be possible, but it's sixty foot plus long. So you'd be digging up pool deck and you'd be digging up pool surface to do that. So we brought in a company with camera next. We entered six-inch pipe inside the building, but we're only, we were able to trace the camera through the pipe, but it enters a ninety, went through a forty-five, hit another ninety, climbed, because the pipe comes in the ground at seven feet below grade. And when it gets up to the top, it's only foot and a half below grade. When we hit that next ninety to turn and go towards floor fountains, we couldn't push the camera any farther through it due to all the nineties and the forty-fives, forty-fives. So, but we were able to detect where the camera ended. So we know from the building to that section, there's no leak. So then they returned with a smaller camera to run the smaller feed lines because we have a three-inch, two and a six-inch. Six inches, they were able to see the crack in the line perfect. I mean, literally there's a crack down the bottom of the pipe and then there was actually something quite missing, which we knew was probably the most significant leak we had because we found that out when we filled the pool and initially turned things on. They were able to run the three-inch. It didn't look like there was any defects in the pipe, with the exception of some corrosion on the steel portion of the pipe. And then the inch-and-a-half pipe, they couldn't send the camera through it because it was too small. But I did have to cut all the lines off above ground so we could actually physically look down in them, see if there's any water in them, at least the inch-and-a-half one, and they're all empty. Well, there's no way to empty them unless you blow them out because they come out like this, they go down, low ground, they come up. There shouldn't have been water in that section on all the pipes and there was no water in it as far as we know. So we anticipated we possibly have leaks in all three of those supply lines. Fortunately, they're only about a foot and a half below the pool deck. So it would limit the amount of destruction that would have to be done because it could be saw cut, jackhammered out without bringing in a large piece of equipment for those three possible leaks and they're all right by each other. The floor fountain one though, that one's going to be a little bit exploratory, where they're going to have to dig it right where the floor fountains are and then probably work their way back towards where we ended with the camera, see if they can find the leak there.
So is it mostly like everything that's above the frost line basically cracked over the winter?
Um, yeah, pretty much.
So are these pipes not insulated at all or?
No, I mean, they're all exterior, they're all outdoors.
You don't have an ASBIL plan for this?
We do, we do. But the ASBIL is not accurate, which you've never seen that before. All they show is a line coming out of the building, goes out, forty-fives goes right over floor fountains. Sure, there's forty-five and there's a ninety, then there's a ninety this way back to the pool.
So that was your ASBILs?
Yeah, so we don't know, you know, how many more turns it could be in it, et cetera. I mean, if they find the area quickly, then the repair could be, they figure between ten, twenty thousand. But if they have to do more exploratory on that floor fountain one, it could be upwards of thirty, forty. They didn't get me a copy of the proposal yet, but obviously it's somewhat time sensitive just due to, everybody's already booked out through next year. So if they can assemble some guys to get them up here, they're going to do it as soon as possible this fall or next spring, so.
So can we request that they put something in there to help insulate those lines? If they're, once they repair them, when they're down, they're repairing them?
Well, I think part of the issue was that, you know, the one that goes to the floor fountains, it was probably due to us not operating the play structure last year.
So water sat in the line?
So, no, we were operating just floor fountains while we were running the same pump that would typically pump to the play structure too. So we were running well over the volume and pressure that we probably should have on that pipe. And we feel like that probably is, could be the cause of it. But the other thing the camera also showed us is there are some dips in the pipes now.
What does that mean?
So instead of the pipe being pitched back towards the building so we can drain it, there's a dip in it.
Because we washed away, we washed away the area around it, right? Or why did it dip?
Or it's.
Why did it dip? It could have settled.
Settled.
It settled, yeah. I mean, it happens, happens in the streets all the time.
So this leak could get worse, correct? And then, and then on that note, what did, what did the leak actually cost us? Other than everyone going, oh, my God, we had to replace all this water. What did it actually cost us of this ballpark?
This year?
Yeah.
Um, well.
Because I thought it was miniscule.
It wasn't, it was miniscule. I think, I think you had like, like fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred dollars in water and maybe another four or five hundred chemicals.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay. I'm just, I guess what I'm thinking is it could be ten, it could be forty. You know, crazy thing, you know, oh, my God, you're just going to throw water away? I don't know, you know? Is it urgent? Is it an emergency? I mean, do you think it is, you know, to, to not have it? I mean, could, that's what my question was, can, can it be worse if we let it sit a year? Even if we go a whole other year and let's say we throw twenty-five hundred dollars away? I'm, I'm just saying, just talking out of my head, just.
Well, for, for me, for the operation itself, I mean, if you're putting water in the ground and you know you're doing it.
That's crazy, yeah.
It's, it's not the right, you need to remake the repair.
Okay, all right, enough about that.
So you did operate without play structure, right?
Yeah, we operated without three portions, three features on the play structure running and without the floor fountains this year.
So, so that, that might have been too much pressure. Could have we dialed it down to have less pressure or did we have to?
We did, we did. We, so those three, we were able to isolate off and we were still able to run most of the play structure. The floor fountains, we weren't able to completely eliminate the leak due to them being underwater. We were able not flow water to them, but there was still water going in them and then into the ground because we had to seal them with rubber plugs. They're below water level, so when the pool was full, we couldn't like seal them up permanently, so.
With our apparatus, with all the different toys and stuff, are we on the same level as everyone else? Or does Wassa have just as many play features and slides and stuff?
They have play structures and slides at all their pools too.
Yeah. Maybe it has handle.
With, with that pipe that you said, there's actually pieces missing, so.
There's actually a piece missing, yeah.
Yeah, are, are we going to put some kind of different pipe in there? That's going to be stronger, sturdier, whatever, or?
Or in our Schedule eighty PVC and it goes to steel. You know, the other ones could be as simple as a flange gasket going from the PVC to steel, but you can't see it, you know? So more likely we go back to Schedule eighty. I mean, it's at least got some give versus steel or, you know, solid. And make sure that, you know, it's winterized properly. And if we even question that we got all the water out of, we would just RV any freeze.
And the compression, I mean, the compaction underneath so that we're maybe not dealing with this settling issues as much?
Right, and that's something that when, when they replace it, I mean, they're going to have to redo any bedding material around the pipes at that time. But right now, we RV any freeze the entire, all fifty-two inlets in the pool each year. It's good insurance to do it in case water seeps through a winterizing plug. I mean, it can happen and then you could have problems within your inlets and your supply system. So RV is a, you know, safe, safe use and for that purpose. And if we question that, if what it wasn't winterized properly, we will start RVing it. That's, we'll start doing from now on because that could, could be the issue right there. You know, water seeped in, sat in the pipe and you don't know if the pipe was crushed from the outside or the inside till you get down there though.
Yeah, and that's just my concern. If we're going to go down there and fix it, let's figure out what, you know, what happened so we can try to prevent it from happening again.
Right.
And I don't know if it was a winterization thing. I thought we kept most of the pool filled for the winter, so I don't know if something.
Keep the deep well full, but like I said, it was a different circumstance. Play structure being gone in the winter, the pipe connection was below grade.
Yep.
And it had airbag, seal it.
Right.
They're, they're, they work well for pressure checking, but will it stay inflated? And where it needs to be from November all the way till April?
Because I mean, with the air temperature and everything else outside, I mean, that's going to.
There was water and ice standing on every one of the connections when we went to get ready to install the play structure, so. Could have been just the circumstances as I mentioned before, so. I'm just, we're just trying to keep the process moving. I don't want to, you know, push it down the road. I don't necessarily, you know, it's not going to cost forty, we're not going to spend forty, obviously. And, you know, local plumbers are like, well, we can repair that. But then they are like, well, you should have sleeves around those PVC pipes that come through the pool. You can't do that because it'll leak that. But you would anywhere else. So a local plumber would try to do things differently with than what a pool manufacturer will tell you to do. I understand the sleeves, it's allowed for frost movement. There's nothing like that and it, these PVC pipes pass through solid concrete. But to keep the pool vessel whole, you can't have a sleeve around the pipe.
So you need a motion from us then?
Yeah, a motion from finance, if they have a recommendation on funding, it's just for funding. This is really just for the funding portion of it. The board would approve, actually move forward project at board meeting time.
So you'll do.
We recommend.
Meeting, so we would, yeah.
Yeah, so we could do this right now if you have a recommendation as far as funding or.
Got to exceed forty thousand in ARPA funds, is that?
Well, I gave you, I gave you multiple options.
Or another source.
Yeah.
And so the funding is going to come out of finance and then the board is going to act right afterward just to get it off the table, right, on ye or nay?
Okay, so I'll make a, I'll move to recommend moving forward to repair the leaks at Aquatic Center for an amount not to exceed forty thousand utilizing ARPA funds.
I'll second it.
Um, but again, I like the caveat in there that whatever they're going to, we're going to do over there to try to figure out what happened. So we just try to get ahead of this thing. And if it was just pressurizing, take whatever it is, just what their, their personal recommendations on how this happened. And if we're going to fix the problem, if there's anything we can do to prevent it from happening in the future, that's all.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to have it all ripped, ripped off and we got to spend an extra five grand and.
Yeah, at that point.
Kind of guarantee that it might not happen again, that.
It's worth it.
Yep.
So, you guys, Sean, did you get all that? So our request along, it's a caveat with the recommendation to approve.
We're not going to exceed forty thousand. I don't think they're going to get there if you do the whole thing. You got your cap on it.
But yeah, I'd just like to know what happened.
Motion by Hardinger, second by Gao. Motion's been approved, any more in discussion? No remarks? Huh? Oh.
All there?
Oh, yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just get in there, oppose. Motion passed.
All right, so question for the board.
Mark, I do have it on the board agenda tonight.
What?
I do have it.
Yeah, let, let, let's get right away. It's at eleven-thirty. This, this might take five minutes off.
I can, I moved to.
Moved by Erbeling?
I'll second.
Second by Hardinger on the discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Boom.
Done.
See that one right over the fence?
Right there. Get to go and watch the Vikings lose, hope.
All right. Is that a promise?
Yeah, well, I don't know. If they win, it sells more crazy fresh, so. Uh, let's see.
I think I said for the finance, all right?
Uh, no, monitor, monitor, monitor purchase.
Oh, shoot, that's right.
So the village board approved the monitor purchase. We're just looking to see out of funds. As I said before, we do have that option if there's excess funds that we could shove it back to the general fund, but at this point, their, that funding is not guaranteed. So I'm looking for approval to use ARPA or something else.
I've got a question regarding this, Jessica. We looked at three different, is this the same thing that we were looking at Nate last time? There was three different bids?
We took the lowest one, twenty-four thousand, yeah. Now, we're just trying to pay for it, that's all we're doing.
So there's one for twenty-five and then there's.
We took the low one, yeah.
One for three and then there's a six-hundred bucks on top.
Going in the low.
Yeah, there's, like, the extra two thousand was the only mounting equipment.
Okay.